The regular monthly board meeting of the Ambrytry School District Board of Correctors on Wednesday, March 15th, 2023 is now called to order. Can everybody please rise for the flag salute? Also, do we have State Street students here to do the flag salute? So you guys can start whenever you're ready.
Let's lead you into the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You also have the student council report, right? You can come over to the mic.
Good evening, and thank you for inviting us to a board meeting this evening. My name is Aindan Nino, and this is Leila Miskul and Maya Dragonjack. And we are members of the 5th Grade Student Council, representing 4th Grade is Colin Pringle. At this time, I will reflect on activities at State Street Elementary this year. During the months of September to December, we raised money for the both Children's Hospital and the Caring Place, proudly donating thousands of dollars. We were featured on KDKA TV for a weather program in October. And 5th Grade Student Council got a hope weather forecaster, Mary Hours. It was pretty cool. We gave her an Ambrytry t-shirt so she too could be a proud Bridger. We also had her second guac, raising money for the Children's Hospital and the Caring Team. We made gingerbread houses that were on display at the block at Northway the month of December. Boy, was that fun. In November, we honored local veterans with a breakfast at State Street. We also participated in Grief Awareness Day by supporting our friends that may have lost someone special to them. We had a food drive to support the betting food bank, and the Carnegie Science Center came out to our school and taught us about engineering. Who knows, maybe someday I'll maybe one. Before Thanksgiving break, we had a mobile science lab, came to our school for three days, learning all kinds of cool things and doing hands-on activities. Thanks PTO for paying for this.
In December, we had Santa Lynn and Santa visited all the classrooms. That Dolly fellow so makes everyone smile. In January, 5th Grade Guard granted attendance Science Center. We did all kinds of fun hands-on activities. January is quiet, so we spiced it up and had Spirit Week to lift everyone's spirits. That was fun. Go Bridgers! We celebrated the Super Bowl by having a cereal drive for the community. But before we give away, we set all the boxes up in the gym and leave the first box and boom, each box followed. It was a domino effect. Our 3rd, 4th, and 5th Grades are working hard preparing for the upcoming PISA days. We do fun things while learning and getting ready for the test in April. In February, there was a clothing drive to support the homeless. March is Dr. Seuss's birthday, and boy, we were lucky. Tomorrow, we moved to Millsco and talked about the place we will go. Our own superintendent, Dr. Pasquilla, read to us and we talked about Millsco. He reminded us that we too can move mountains. Thanks, Dr. Pasquilla. We will be having speech to someone special in the morning. That means Mom, Dad, Sister, Brother, Grandma, whoever is special to you. Thank you.
We are currently working on getting the next tier for our school-wide positivity behavior. That's from the state. We get rewarded all month long for being stars and following directions. Did you know that recently Dunkin' Yoyos were given away? The Easter Bunny will visit every classroom. There will also be fun activities for family. So mark your calendars for movie night and family craft night. May is busy. We will honor our teachers for their hard work. 5th Grade will visit the Strip District after completing the book Macaroni Boy, where sections are from place in the Strip. How cool is that? I can hardly wait. There are tons of field trips. Move-Up Day, kindergarten finals, root beer floats socials, and our traditional robot parade, where we will feature our homemade robots that we made in steam. Wow, we are busy and will continue to be for the remainder of the year. Thank you to the school board for your support.
Thank you very much, and thanks for coming out tonight. This meeting is being recorded for district purposes. It is or may be published in part or in its entirety on the district's website without the express permission of meeting participants. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Carpenter?
Here.
Mr. Seifis?
Here.
Mrs. Fisher?
Here.
Ms. Fitzgo?
Here.
Mr. Keever?
Here.
Mrs. Keho?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Zachi?
Here.
Mrs. Ramasco?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. And the sunshine law, please.
The Board of School Directors held an executive session on Wednesday, May 15th to discuss personnel matters, information strategy, and/or negotiation session relating to negotiation of collective bargaining agreement. Matters subject to attorney-client privilege and other confidentiality laws, salary schedule, and labor relations.
Thank you. Any correspondence this evening?
No correspondence.
Thank you. Can I have a motion? Sorry, just a clarification. Can I have a motion to accept the minutes of Wednesday, February 1st, meet and discuss voting in non-voting meetings, and Wednesday, February 15th, a board meeting?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Can I have a motion to accept the treasurer's report dated February 2023? Any second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And can I have a motion to approve the agenda for this evening?
Actually, Madam President, I have an amendment to the agenda this evening.
Okay.
Under Personnel, Salary, Schedule, and Labor Relations, on page 11, number 2 should read, "It is recommended to ratify employee number 1,159 taking an intermittent leave of absence under Board Policy 535, family and medical leave beginning March 8th, 2023, not to exceed the 12 weeks." Just that one word, that's all.
Thank you. We're gonna go ahead and add in the one other one that we were, that's why we were discussing it.
Also, yes, also amendment for number 15 on page 13, paraeducators, right before where it says middle school para. The employee, first name Z-A-Z-S-H-Y-R-A, last name Bryant, B-R-Y-A-N-T.
Thank you. Mrs. Smith, are you making a motion for both of those amendments?
I am.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries? Okay, so for this evening, we have a lot of students here, which is amazing for recognition, and we have, I don't believe we have any presentations. We have a lot to go through. So what we're gonna do, the school board is gonna come down so that you can come up and shake everybody's hand. So we'll call your name. If you could just come forward, somebody will hand your certificate, and then you'll just walk straight through the line of everybody that's down there, the administration and the school board, and our solicitor. So that's kinda how, just so you know how it'll sort of flow. So you guys could all go down.
Not sure I even need a microphone. Good evening, everyone. To begin our recognitions this evening, can we have the Ambrytry Area Varsity and Competitive Cheerleaders, please, come down? The Ambrytry Area Varsity Competitive Cheer Teams traveled to Orlando, Florida to compete in the prestigious UCA National High School Cheer Championship. Their first and third place wins at Regionals in Columbus, Ohio gained them the invitations to move on to the national competition for only the second time ever in Ambrytry history. Ambrytry's Game Day team performed very well with a zero deduction routine. Even though their first routine was amazing, they fell short of moving on by one-tenth of a point, which shows the level of competition at the national level. The Traditional Team competed in Ambrytry's second routine of the day with a few hiccups in the routine that cost them from advancing. We want to congratulate the coaches and the cheerleaders on representing Ambrytry Area School District at a national level. Under Coaches Jen Phillips and Amanda Palshaw, Ambrytry Varsity Competitive Cheer plans to keep bringing home trophies while being recognized as a serious contender at the Nationals Competition next year with even better routines. Congratulations, young ladies. The girls that are here tonight, we have Samantha Orlowski, Senior. She was one of our captains. Bailey Braun, Macy Smith, Amari Seymour, Reina Hammond, Abby Reeves, Neveah Cox, and Coach Jen Phillips. We're gonna move on to Ambrytry Wrestling. Congratulations. Can I have the wrestlers come on down? We'll call your name, you'll go through the line, you'll shake hands, and they have a certificate? And you will receive a certificate. On the weekend of February 18th and 19th, the Ambrytry Youth Wrestlers participated in the Western Area Wrestling Association, better known as the Wawa Championship. During Wawas, the wrestlers compete with representatives from other youth wrestling programs around the western Pennsylvania and West Virginia area. This year, there were 22 youth organizations present, 15 Ambrytry athletes placed at this event. The Ambrytry Youth Wrestling, under Novice, we had Alex Cogan, Luke Stimel, Eugene Sturdivant, Royal Cobbs, Luka Fabinich, Riley Wallace, Nolan Spencer, Chase Sirditch, Parker Patero, Ryan Schweitzer. And under Open, we had Derek Dixon, Brady Vikovakan, Dominic Deriggi, Max Bablock, Bryce McKinney, and Gio Simpson. Congratulations. And now we're gonna move on to the Ambrytry Gymnastics. Congratulations to the following Ambrytry freshman gymnast. Elizabeth Hoag for competing and qualifying in the Judges Braun Invitational on February 9th. Hoag placed 3rd on the vault and competed in the PA Classic State Meet on February 17th at Moon Area High School. Is Elizabeth here? No? Let's give her a round of applause. And other gymnast, Marina Baker, is she here? Okay. Marina Baker, for her gymnastics accomplishments this year, is a freshman high school gymnast. Marina competed as an individual gymnast representing Ambrytry Area School District along with Lizzie Hoag. Although Marina qualified for Whippy Oles in gymnastics this year, she did not attend due to attending the national competition in Disney with her varsity cheerleading team. But she did go on to qualify to compete in the Pennsylvania High School State Championship as an Ambrytry Area High School gymnast, where she placed 12th overall in the state of Pennsylvania for her division. Let's give her a round of applause also. Math Counts Success. On Saturday, February 11th, 12 students from Ambrytry Area Middle School participated in the Beaver County Math Counts Competition held at Geneva College. The competing students were Charles Stefanik, Parker Isel, James Houston, JR Costa, Colin Meadows, Evan Francis, I hope, and I apologize if I'm butchering anybody's names, Malissa Harroy, Sidney Smith, Noella Edwards, Gavin Calder, Alyssa Smith, and Oliver Ozennich. The competition featured 48 students from schools across Beaver County. Students independently competed in the sprint round of 30 no calculator questions within 40 minutes, and the target round of four sets of two calculator questions within six minutes for each set. Then Charles Stefanik, JR Costa, James Houston, and Parker Isel worked together on the team round of 10 questions. The team finished 3rd overall. The final individual results had two Ambrytry students in the top 10 in the county level. They were Charles Stefanik, who ranked 4th, and JR Costa, who ranked 7th overall. With his top 4 placement, Charles qualified for the state level and will be competing in Harrisburg on March 18th. If any of you are here, please come forward. Please join us in wishing Charles the best of luck. TSA Region 1 2023 Results. The Technology Education Department is pleased to announce the results from the Technology Student Association Region 1 Conference. 24 members of the local Ambrytry Area Chapters of the Technology Student Association captured multiple individual and team awards. The conference was held at Blackhawk High School on January 21st, with students from over a dozen different chapters competing. High School Chapter, Children's Stories, 3rd Mackenzie Majersik, Brian Reichert, Heidi Setzenfan, Leah Kane, Natasha Alexander. You could come forward if you're here. Yes, I'll keep going through and reading. If you are present, please come forward to get your certificate. Dragster Design, 2nd Caitlin DeRochers, 5th Lindsay Stickles, 7th Sean Anderson. Engineering Design, 3rd Sean Anderson, Cade McGovern, Cody Roper, Camden Meweney, Tobias Dowlen, Gabriel Fisher. Essays on Technology, 2nd Mara Ilko. On-Demand Video, 2nd Jana Rustnak, Abby Smith, Logan Simoniak. Photographic Technology, 1st Mackenzie Majersik, 5th Heidi Setzenfan. Prepared Presentation, 3rd Connor Brenner. Structural Design and Engineering, 1st Axton Denny and Caitlin DeRochers, 2nd Mara Ilko and Hannah Laramore. Systems Control, 9th Jana Rustnak, Abby Smith, Logan Simoniak. Technology Problem Solving, 8th Axton Denny and Caitlin DeRochers. PA Logo Design, 2nd Leah Kane, 3rd Mackenzie Majersik. Chapter Team Written, 2nd Cody Roper, 3rd Hannah Laramore, 4th Caitlin DeRochers. Forensic Science Written, 2nd Ryan Reichert, 4th Hannah Laramore. Coding Written, 9th Gabriel Fisher. Junior High Chapter, Challenging Technology Issues, 2nd Isla Ozennich and Oliver Ozennich. 3rd Christian Roberts and Jakari Levett. Tech Bowl Written, 12th Oliver Ozennich. Forensic Technology Written, 5th Isla Ozennich. Congratulations to all the kids.
Alrighty, next up is the Martin Luther King Competition winners. Congratulations to the winners of the Dr. Martin Luther King Autorical Contest from the Ambrytry Area School District. The results were as follows. 4th Grade Economy Elementary, Mia Paganini, 1st Place winner. You gotta clap that up, that was a first place! Alright, 4th Grade Highland Elementary, Tiana Seifis, 2nd Place winner. Come on up here, TT. That's my baby. 5th Grade State Street Tata Shaw, 2nd Place winner. Come on down if you're here. Alright, next up, 8th Grade Ambrytry Middle School, Faith Aguirre, 2nd Place winner. Okay, 7th Grade Ambrytry Middle School, Molly Anna Seifis, 2nd Place winner. Come on, Ma Wa. It's another one of my babies. Next up, 10th and 11th Grade Ambrytry Area High School winner, Mackenzie Sutton, 1st Place. What a perfect score, by the way. A perfect score. You want me to say it one more time? A perfect score. That's phenomenal. Wow, I don't think I've ever seen that, actually. Alright, the students listed above will receive their prize at the King Community Lunch and Banquet on Saturday, April 15th of this year. Okay? Now semifinalists for the Martin Luther King Competition. Congratulations to the following students who represented Ambrytry Area School District as semifinalists at the Dr. Martin Luther King Competition on Saturday, March 11th at Rochester High School. Alright, 4th Grade Economy Elementary, we got Mia Paganini and Nora Platt and Angel Crusell. Congratulations. But also, 4th Grade Highland Elementary, Tiana Seifis. Moving on to State Street Elementary, 5th, yeah, 5th Grade Tata Shaw and Alice Smetley? Sorry, Smetley. Congratulations. 8th Grade Ambrytry Middle School, we got Faith Aguirre, Kendall Harper, Holly Bunzak, and Sophie Miller. Yep, come shake hands, come shake hands. Alright, and then we have the 7th Grade Ambrytry Middle School, Molly Anna Seifis. Okay, moving on to 10th and 11th Grade Ambrytry Area High School, Mackenzie Sutton and Madeline Palmer. Congratulations again. Alright, rounding us out, we got Grade 12 Ambrytry Area High School, Amanda Palmer and Addison Isel. Congratulations, and congratulations to all our winners. Great job. Alright, come forward, we got pictures, we got pictures. Come forward, right over here in the middle.
Congratulations to the GFWC Women's Club of Baden Literature Winners. Short Story Category: Two for Grades Three through Five. Celia Murner. Landon Musser. Leila Miskel. Lucas Briscoe. Anaya Bitash. If I pronounce these names wrong, I'm really sorry. Congratulations to Celia, who will be moving to the state level. Next we have the Art Division One, Grades One and Two. Ellie Duda. And Liliana Rousch. Art Division Two, Grades Three through Five. Alice Smedley. Adrian Martin. Jackson Payne. And Grant Zachi. Congratulations to everyone. I spoke to the President of the Women's Club last night, and they said thank you to everyone who participated, and congratulations to all. Alright, next we're gonna go through Students of the Month. High School January Students of the Month. Carliece Kaz Chandler. Rihanna Ramirez. Pietro Pucey. Carter Dunlap. High School January Extra Effort Award. Henry Budzak. Angelina Probst. Mackenzie Majersik. Zachary Wingland. Once again, I apologize if I mess up names. High School February Students of the Month. Taylor Thompson. Luca Ditto. Joseph Janicki. And Taylor Kennedy. High Schools February Extra Effort Award. Ava Dragonjack. Benjamin Francis. Ethan Grant. And Samantha Estrino. Alright, are we splitting before now or should we just keep going? Middle School January Student of the Month. Sixth Grade Rosella Demuth. Seventh Grade Grace Beaver. Eighth Grade Parker Easle. Alright, I'm down here. Economy Elementary February Student of the Month. Claire Hartman, Fifth Grade. Highland Elementary Student of the Month for February. Caroline Blonsky and Alexandra Blonsky, both First Grade. Highland Elementary February Extra Effort Award. Brayden Bland. And Colton Van der Buren. Did I say it right? I didn't, I'm sorry. Congratulations everyone. We'll get to State Street in one second, because there's a lot of you tonight. Do you need help Matt?
Excellent, thank you guys.
Alright, State Street First Semester Students of the Month. For Kindergarten, we have Benjamin Tussick. Isla Wojcowski. Remington Stumpf. Emerson Hill. Amy Shu. Max Fabinich. First Grade Luke Stimmel. Carly Milligan. Justin Heisong. Aria Knox. Meadow Cordis. Rhett Poor. Clara Frederick. Second Grade Owen Duda. Ellie Duda. Carter McFarland. Lilian Dobich. Roska Quib Chubb. I butchered her name, I'm very sorry. Grant Cratcheville. Jazari Rogers. And Bryce Dowlen. Do you want to take a break first? Or can we fit them all up here? Alright. Third Grade Chase Suji. Danica Quib, thank you. Scott Coaches. Holly Bell. Bailey Knox. Luca Fabinich. Danica Rideout. Fourth Grade Caleb Lewis. Nina Elms. Tyler Cook. Emma Ursher. Farrah Stewart. Eli Fabrizio. Abigail Dobich. Fifth Grade Christian Pringle. Alice Smedley. Tyler Grimm. Mila Shovitz. Leah Miskel. Quinn Zachi. Peyton Jones. And Jonah Sable. And our Building Stars for State Street. Royal Cobbs. Amaya Cobbs. Micah Sable. And Camille Gilbert. Congratulations to all of you. Alright, if you guys have your certificates, can you come on down? Kind of like tall, maybe in the back by the adults. Somebody might have to kneel. Make sure everybody's in. There we go. Is everybody in? Put your certificate down a little bit, by your belly. Is that better? Ready to get good? Guys, get everybody? Wait, hold on, Dr. Phil has been in the back. Everybody smile. One more, two more. Alright. Over here, hold on, we got a few more.
So next we have Employees of the Month. We have Dr. Zupsek here, for the high school.
Oh, thank you, as if I need it. Very, I was worried. Good evening, everybody. It gives me great pleasure to recognize Rob Jamery as High School Employee of the Month. Affectionately, he is known as Jam. He is the first person to greet us when we arrive to the building every day, and the first words out of his mouth when anyone walks in the door every day is, "What can I do to help you?" Rob is a dedicated employee who always goes above and beyond. His pride in his work and his attention to detail are impressive. When I think about Rob, I think he is someone who strives to make each day better for those around him.
Congratulations, sir, absolutely.
Congratulations, thanks for all your hard work.
We want to get a picture too. Come on back here with us.
Thank you, thank you. Congratulations.
Evening, everyone. My name is Renell Hurd, the principal at the middle school. Today for our Staff Member of the Month is Ms. Ashley Simpson. She's one of our math teachers. She's a rock star, I mean, she does everything for us. She's constantly wanting to help out the team. She does great stuff with PSAs. She's like our tech advisor, so anything I need, computer, I can call Ms. Simpson to do. But she's like really a joy to have around. She's very nice, she greets all of our students. So this month we'll go to Ms. Simpson, who's not here tonight, which means I'll get to call her to my office tomorrow and scare her and then give her an award. But she's amazing, so thank you guys for this, I really, really appreciate it.
Good evening, for the Employee of the Month at Economy, Joe Pascarella Superintendent, filling in for Mrs. Galitzas here. The Employee of the Month is Barb Fries. Is she here tonight? Well, I'll read a little bit about Barb. Barb Fries is a teaching assistant in the Life Skills Classroom at Economy Elementary. I cannot say enough about the positive impact that she has made at Economy. She is dedicated to her students and strives to improve their academics. She has established a good rapport with our Life Skills families by regularly communicating with them and keeping them apprised of the needs and interests of the students that she serves. Barb comes to work every day with a bright, kind, and cheerful smile on her face. She greets everyone every day and makes them feel special. Barb is helpful and extends herself to assist in maintaining a great learning community at Economy Elementary. Congratulations, Barb Fries.
Hi, I'd like to recognize the Employee of the Month for State Street Elementary School, and that is Mr. Jared Pride. He is our Employee of the Month for the Month of January. However, he was not able to attend, but he is here today. Where are you at, Mr. Pride? Come on down. So Mr. Jared Pride is a custodian at State Street and has been nominated for the Employee of the Month for January 2023. Mr. Pride was hired as a substitute custodian in 2012 and was hired full-time in 2013. Mr. Pride found his home at State Street, where he takes pride in his work. The word pride is a noun, its definition is a feeling of deep pleasure or satisfaction derived from one's own achievements. The achievements of those with whom one is closely associated or from qualities or possessions that are widely admired. Mr. Pride takes pride in his work. He's a hard worker, he's always willing to help. If something needs done, he will state, "Don't worry, I'll take care of it," and it is taken care of. Mr. Pride works well with all the students and staff at State Street. Mr. Pride likes State Street so much that his own child attends here. When Mr. Pride found out that he- When Mr. Pride found out that he was nominated, he was concerned about how the custodial work would be done while he was at the board meeting receiving his nomination. Mr. Pride is always willing to go the extra mile to keep State Street sparkling. State Street is very proud to have Mr. Jared Pride as part of our State Street family. Congratulations, Mr. Pride. You have your certificate from last month, too. Do you have any words you want to say?
No.
I think Mrs. Brock wants a picture.
Oh, go ahead. The Employee of the Month for February is Ms. Trish Filbert. Unfortunately, Ms. Filbert was unable to make it tonight, but I'd like to read about Ms. Filbert. Ms. Filbert is such an asset to State Street Elementary. Throughout the years, she has assisted in organizing the library system, worked as a cafeteria monitor, and guided our fourth and fifth grade students as a teaching assistant. Whenever Ms. Trish is asked to do anything, she helps without any complaints. She is excellent at helping any of our students with difficult lessons and tests because of her calm and caring demeanor. While maintaining absolute professionalism, she has earned the trust and respect of both the students and teachers. Ms. Filbert cares so much about our kids, and you can definitely tell that. She is also willing to assist teachers with computer issues or to give ideas for ways to help our children improve. We are very lucky to have a teaching assistant like Ms. Filbert in the Ambridge Area School District. And just as a side note, just want to let you all know that she likes what her job is so much that she is going back to school to become a teacher. So, and we're hoping she works here at Ambridge, definitely. Thank you. Was that a plumb?
That would be perfect.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to welcome up Ms. Lauren Terramina. Ms. Terramina was nominated by me. She just finished the Living Museum for our fourth graders. She worked tirelessly, week after week after week, preparing the students, helping them with their project. She then had them present to the third and fifth grade, and then she organized a whole family event at night. Beyond her Living Museum, if you know Ms. Terramina, she's there late every night. She plans endlessly to do differentiated instruction for her students, and she's just a phenomenal teacher. Thank you, Ms. Terramina.
I'm going to break some rules here. Listen, if we had Teacher of the Year in Ambridge School District, this lovely woman right here would be it. She does a lot of phenomenal things at Helen Elementary and also across the district. So I just wanted to make sure I said that about Ms. Terramina. Congratulations.
Mrs. Seepis wants a photo. Congratulations. Thank you, everybody, for coming this evening. At this time, district residents may come forward to comment on agenda items only. Each person must state their first and last name and address prior to speaking. Each resident will be allowed three minutes and can speak only once. This period of public comment prior to the standing committee reports will be limited to one half hour. Although not required, board members desiring to address questions or concerns may do so after the resident's comments or questions or at the conclusion of the committee reports. There will still be an opportunity for residents to comment on any business relevant to the Ambridge Area School District under Old and New Business at the end of the meeting. Is there anybody who wishes to speak this evening on any agenda items? If you can come down to the mic, that would be great.
Hi, I'm Ashley McCory. I have two students in Ambridge High School, and I would like to know when you guys are going to be hiring a nurse full-time.
Do you have any? We like you to get all of your questions out. We take notes, and then we'll answer them all at the end.
That's my question.
Oh, that's it, okay. All right, thanks.
Generally speaking, we are continuing to recruit for hiring of the nurse at the high school. I do believe recently we were able to get a substitute contracted nurse that's been starting. Is that correct? Yes. So we do have somebody that is able to be here as a substitute now, which prior to that, we were having trouble getting a substitute. But we continue to look for a permanent person for the position.
Okay, is she there five days a week? Okay, that was my only question. Thank you.
You know, and that's our goal every day to get subs, but you know, sometimes things change. But as of today, it sounds like we are planning on having it staffed with subs while we're trying to locate a full-time person. I appreciate your question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak this evening on any agenda items? Okay, moving on to committee reports. Under Education and Technology, Mrs. Smith and Mr. Zachi.
I think the only new one is number five, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so number five is flexible instruction days. It's recommended to approve flex days for the 23-24 school year as an alternate form of instruction in place of a day of otherwise canceled due to an emergency. PDE will count these days as a full day of school. So motion is put forth to approve numbers one through five.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any board discussion? Can I have a roll call, please? Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Seepis?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher? Ms. Fitzco?
Yes.
Mr. Keever?
Yes.
Mrs. Kehoe?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zachi?
Yes.
Mrs. Romasco?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Under Finance and Budget and Buildings and Grounds, Mr. Carpenter and Mr. Keever.
I make a motion to adopt items number one through six under Finance and Budget and Building and Grounds.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any board discussion?
I'd just like to thank the folks that donated the gifts and kind on number five and six. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Can I have a roll call, please? Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Seepis?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Fitzco?
Yes.
Mr. Keever?
Yes.
Mrs. Kehoe?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zachi?
Yes.
Mrs. Romasco?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. We have no items under Athletics and Public Relations for this evening. For Under Steering and Roles and Legislative, Mrs. Kehoe and Mrs. Fisher.
I'd like to move to the adoption of item number one.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any board discussion? Can I have a roll call, please? Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Seepis?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Fitzco?
Yes.
Mr. Keever?
Yes.
Mrs. Kehoe?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zachi?
Yes.
Mrs. Romasco?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Under Personnel and Salary Schedule Labor Relations, Mr. Seepis and Mrs. Smith.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to accept items one through 12 as amended this evening.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, through 15. One through 15. My mistake.
Mrs. Smith, would you mind reading?
Yes.
I'm looking at it right now. So there are wrestling and lacrosse under number eight. Thank you.
Sure.
And then there's more after that, but...
So there's been a few spring coaches added since last week. We have added boys tennis, Marion Puit as an assistant coach with a stipend of $1,050. We have added wrestling coaches. Ron Wilson will be the varsity assistant coach at $2,400. And Ron Wilson will be the middle school coach at $1,850. Also, lacrosse has picked up a volunteer, Paige Sheer, with no remuneration.
Thank you. And then 14 and 15.
Number 14 is recommended to approve Anna... Help me. Macaja? Macaja? Midsia? I don't know. Midsia, I'm sorry. Be a non-union food service worker at Economy Elementary pending receipt of current clearances, satisfactory drug screening, TB testing, and response from current or former employers for the Act 168 screening. Is there any other discussion? And then number 15 is a paraeducator. It is recommended to hire the following individual to fill the paraeducator position as per terms of the Ambridge Area Education Support Professional Association, the Collective Bargaining Unit Agreement, pending receipt of current clearances, satisfactory drug screening, TB testing, response by current and former employer due to one Act 168 screening.
Thank you. So that is a motion on the floor, correct?
Yes, one through 15 as amended.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any board discussion on any of those items?
Where is 15?
Oh, the name?
Middle school?
Any other discussion items? I'm sorry?
Oh, no.
Okay, can I have a roll call, please? Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Seepis?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Fitzco?
Yes.
Mr. Keever?
Yes.
Mrs. Kehoe?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zachi?
Yes.
Mrs. Romasco?
Yes.
Motion carries. Under Solicitor's Report, Solicitor Ginn?
I don't have anything to report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Pascarella, Under Superintendent's Report?
I just wanted to congratulate all the kids and staff that came out tonight. That was an excellent showing. A lot of great things going on in the district, and it was awesome to get a chance to recognize them. So special thanks to those folks and their parents. And as always, you know, please come out to any of our events. Spring music that's going to be coming out, some of the music, excuse me, music concerts that will be coming out for the spring and sports and those types of things. Come out and support the Bridgers. Thank you.
Thank you. It is now time for Old and New Business. Any district resident who desires to comment on any business relevant to the Ambridge Area School District should now come forward. Each person must state their first and last name and address prior to speaking, and each person will be allowed three minutes and can speak only once. Bye.
Hi, my name's Karia Kella Jenkins. I live at 223 Dogwood Circle, Baden, 15005. Last week, I was here at the meeting, actually for something really different. I didn't even know about what was going on in the middle in the high school, middle school and high school. But after listening, I had some concerns and came up with some questions. Mr. Pascarelli, can you tell me what is an ICS and what roles staff in the schools would have in an ICS?
Do you want to ask all your questions? Did you say ISS?
ICS.
Do you...
I have a lot of questions, but depending on what he says and what his response is, is how I'll ask more.
Okay.
I mean, if he knows what it is, I don't need to keep going.
Are there other people that wish to speak this evening? Nobody else? Okay, then we'll do it that way.
Thank you.
So you're asking me the context of what ICS is?
And you don't mean ISS?
No, ICS.
Okay.
I have a paper over here. I printed it out, so I can give it to you once you are able to let me know what it is.
Well, the exact, I'm not sure what background or any background information...
It's to do with preparedness.
I couldn't hear you.
To do with preparedness.
You can go on to the next question.
Go ahead.
Okay. It stands for Incident Command System. Do you know what an Incident Command System is?
I'm aware of Incident Command System, yes.
Can you tell me what roles the staff in the school, all the schools have in the ICS?
Every single person's role? Well, when you have an incident...
Well, no, there's specific roles in the ICS and so can Command System?
I'll take your questions, and then I'll answer them, but I will ask for a favor. And this is how I handle every meeting. If we're going to go back and forth, which I don't necessarily recommend, then I would ask that I'll let you finish, then you let me finish.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't...
That's fine.
I wasn't trying to do that. I was just trying to help you out.
So I'll tell you what, my general knowledge, I don't have everything in front of me. I've gone to training in and around school safety and Incident Command System. Generally speaking, when we have our trainings and look at that, there's safety teams. We get people in place that are going to be, have certain roles in the system. So when an incident would occur, different people would assess and address different roles.
Okay.
Generally speaking, what occurs. If you're asking me, what is every single person's role? Okay, you didn't ask.
No. No, in the Incident Command System, there's a role, and you have to have a person that's a staff person that fulfills that role. It's not the opposite way. Do you see what I'm saying? It's not a staff... Every person in the school has a role. It's the ICS has, like, within the ICS, there might be like five roles. And who is taking each role?
Sure. So in, from the trainings that we've occurred, we went through, myself, Mr. King is the security administrator. Oftentimes, we'll do some tabletop exercises, and the person that's in charge of that might get taken over, say, if the police come in play. And the police might take over that Incident Command, and then you will facilitate other roles. But in the given time, you would look and delegate certain duties to the best of your ability to decide where the kids would be located. In this case, make those types of decisions, communication around reunification and those types of things. Who's going to communicate information out to the necessary bodies and, you know, that come into support?
Okay. Is the Emergency Preparedness Plan published online?
So we have a, I don't know the answer to that for sure, if it is online or not. I know that we have a plan that we continuously try to monitor and look into, and we share that with the police department, and we make changes as to we see fit. Recently, we reviewed at some of our school buildings where folks would go. Often, we don't, in other words, where would they go if we had to evacuate in this situation and that situation? Often, I'm not sure if we make that public or if that's really a suggestion, because then people would be able to find all of our safety plans where we go. So my general idea is, I can't say for sure if it's online, but I would doubt it.
Okay, so the reason why I'm questioning it, so I looked at Pine Richland School District's website, and they have two different plans, a functional plan, which is what you're referring to, something that's maybe more private and only for certain people that are involved with it. And then they also have a 30-page public plan. I printed it out. I have it here. I can show it to you guys. I think you should provide something like that for the school district. Sorry, I have a lot of questions. When's the last time you updated this plan?
Well, what I will say to you, go ahead.
That's okay. I was just going to say, so you get three minutes of time? That's why I was letting, like, at some point...
Can I ask you a quick question, though?
Well, let me finish.
Well, no, I've been here. I've come to three meetings, and you guys have come late 20 minutes each. That's an hour of my time. I'm the only person in this entire place from the community.
So I wasn't stopping you. I was just trying to let you know that at some point, we will have to stop, but you can continue.
Can you give me an hour? Because I sat here for an hour for you guys.
I promise you, we are doing, we are meeting before this, and we get here very, very early to try to get here by seven o'clock.
Most boards meet on time. I've worked with executives around the world.
Oh, trust me, we work a lot. That's fine.
No, I'm not saying they get here on time for meetings.
We are here on time.
We apologize. We apologize.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I really don't care. The only reason why I'm asking is because I want to ask my questions.
I appreciate that, yes. I just don't want, you know, if there is anybody, I don't know 100% if there's anybody else that wants to speak up after you. Maybe they do. Maybe something that you say has something sparked something in them, but...
There is only one, two, three...
All I'm saying is at some point, we will have to stop.
There's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Seven people from the community.
I appreciate your questions, and I want you to continue. I'm just saying, at some point, we can't, we can't go on forever. It's not an interrogation back and forth. It's the board.
Well, I don't know how to get the information out. Like, how do you guys, what would you prefer?
Yeah, so I'm the solicitor, and if you want, you can provide me all the questions that you have, and I'd be happy to gather all the information and email it over to you. Because that might actually be, and provide you with a more thorough answer to your questions.
I really want the information in the moment, not someone that can research it for three days.
That's typically not the best way to get an answer.
Really?
Yeah, right.
So can I ask you a question?
Some of these questions that you're asking are really serious and probably need thought and research.
No, not all of them.
In order to make sure that you're answered correctly.
Not really. So for example, when was the last Emergency Preparedness Plan?
2020.
Thank you. With a show of hands, who on the school board has read the plan in the last three months? The last six months? One year?
Yeah, it's been about a year.
Yeah, probably about a year.
We worked hard on it.
I'm not arguing with that. I'm just saying, how often? How often do you guys update the plan?
We spent a lot of time over the summer updating the plan, yes.
Okay, I'm just... So it's like, once a year, you update it?
There are safety meetings every...
Yeah, we have one quarter, I believe.
We have one tomorrow. Is it every quarter? Every three months or every...
Roughly, every quarter.
Every three to four months.
Yes.
And then we meet, we met like in the summertime to do an overview of the entire safety plan.
But your EMS plan, the one that you submit, like the EMS that's due every year, that goes over every situation, even like if there was a nuclear power plant meltdown, it was updated in 2020, gets updated, I believe, every four years, and they ask for like our contact updates every spring, about every March.
Okay, thank you. One other question. It's a long question, so I'll just read it, and then you guys... Okay, I'd like to know every board member's top three reasons for the violence in the middle school and high school respectively, and how did you come to those conclusions? What interventions have you proposed based on those reasons you have provided? What were the outcomes of the interventions? If you have not proposed any interventions as of yet, what interventions do you think would decrease, would work to decrease the levels of violence in each school and why? And then, Ms. Fisher, you said you've been on the board for a while, and you're president before. Can you start off? Is that possible?
Actually, I'm going to interject. That's a very long and complicated question that I'm not going to allow the board to answer. I'd be happy to take that question.
Can one person answer it?
Nope. I'd be happy to, because here's the reason. It's complicated, and it involves potentially student-related matters, personnel matters, and various other matters that the board...
For the top three reasons for violence in the middle school?
The board is not necessarily able to speak to a variety of issues in a public forum that may involve answering your question. So the board will not be answering that question. If you'd like to provide it to me, I'd be happy to do what I can to answer it for you.
Okay, can I ask you one other question? Since you're a solicitor for the board, is there a solicitor for the community that's provided for? Do we, as a community, have a solicitor that represents our needs?
So the solicitor for the school district is supporting the board, which is supporting your community.